Come on.
Maggie.
My video just flickers in and out, so I apologize.
It's okay.
Hello, Talia.
Good evening, Ron. So, right now, we've... This is Talia, Senior Plan Clerk. So, earlier today, we received an email from Al saying that he would be late in arriving. So, not only do we need to elevate Mr. Penny Packer to the role of a full member, we should also determine who's going to be the chair.
Okay. How do you propose to do that?
Um... Folks, I spoke with Al just before the meeting, and he suggested that for this evening, that Ron take the reins, and that going forward, to avoid any confusion, we're going to work out a process where we know which of the vice chairs will be serving.
Perfect.
No, my question is... No, never mind, forget, we won't even go there. Okay. Tonight's meeting. It is now 7:02. And I would like to have a motion to open the meeting.
You just call it to order, Ron.
I call the meeting to order.
There you go. Next thing you do is the roll call.
Then we have a roll call. Ron Prellwitz here.
Ron, you need to call on each one of them to... So they can respond.
Okay, thank you. Who's that, Ms. Hagan?
I'm sorry, that's right. Remind me, yeah, that was... This is Maggie Hogan speaking, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, Ron Prellwitz here. Carolyn Light.
Ron, we can see that she's... Looks like she's attempting to get on... In... By two methods. Why don't we skip over to the others, and we'll come back to her?
I'm here.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, Ron and Carolyn is here. Emily.
Emily Shumshina is present.
Thank you. Keith Lindelof.
Keith is not yet here.
Okay, Keith is at this point in time absent. John Penny Packer.
John Penny Packer is here.
Okay, thank you. Now, it says on my agenda here that someone would like to have a prospective member attendance for April 7th.
Yeah, that's the... That's the pre-roll, Ron. That's the... It's a new item on the agenda.
Okay.
And basically, what you're going to want to do is go through all the names again to see if they intend... If they're expecting to be present for the April 7th agenda.
All righty then, let's go ahead and do that. Ron Prellwitz. My plan is to attend the meeting on April 7th. Carolyn Light.
Yes.
Emily Shumshina.
Emily will be here on April 7th.
Keith Lindelof. He's still not here. And Penny Packer.
Keith just arrived, let me...
John Penny Packer intends to attend on... In April, what, 7th?
Okay, thank you. Now, approval of minutes from the February 3rd meeting. Do we have a... A motion?
This is Carolyn. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February 3rd meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
And workshop minutes. This is Emily.
And workshop.
I'll second.
Yes, and workshop. I stand corrected. Thank you, ladies. And we have... If I'm understanding this correctly, we have a motion and a second. Hold those in favor. Ron Prellwitz, yes.
Carolyn Light, yes.
Lindelof, yes.
Shumshina, yes.
John Penny Packer, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is an advisory opinion. And it states here, "Advisory opinion to the Town Council. Amendments to the zoning ordinance district use table. Appendix A, zoning, Chapter 134, Section 5. Filed on October 18, 2020. The proposed amendments would prohibit any additional gasoline diesel service stations and allow... And to allow electric charging stations in neighborhood businesses, commercial and manufacturing zones, including the two existing gas stations. Proposed and sponsored by former Town Councilor Sylvia Thompson. House U board members." Do you have any discussion?
This is Carolyn. This is Carolyn, I'd like to comment. Okay. Um, I'm in favor... I'm in favor of... Not expanding the gas diesel service stations in our community. I'm not in favor of prohibiting electric charging stations for residents. I am in favor of promoting electric charging stations in other commercial environments. I... We've had a lot of discussions about solar for residential applications at the town council level, and I'm of the firm belief that it would alienate potential people in our community if they didn't have the authority to install electric charging stations at their homes. It's very popular globally. It's the trend, and I don't think we want a reputation for eliminating that opportunity to bring green energy into a household and a family. It's a big money-saving effort when a resident decides that they want to do something like that. I just don't think we can stop people from doing the right thing on their property.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Those are my comments. You're welcome.
I'd like to expand on that a little bit. I can't see how anybody would think that we have any right at all to tell people what they can plug into their wall. If they want to use their electric car, and they have a plug in their wall to plug it in, that's their business, not ours. That's just my opinion. Okay, anyone else?
Ron, it's Maggie Hogan.
Yes.
So, the proposed ordinance does not address residential charging stations. I agree with you, and I believe that those would be permitted as of right in a home. This ordinance is dealing specifically with commercial, manufacturing, and neighborhood business zones for the electric charging stations.
Thank you.
Maggie.
The way that I understood after reading it, I felt perhaps I had missed something.
I'm looking at the district use table that was presented. Sorry, this is Carolyn speaking. There is a district use table provided here, and it says electric... It's 559 electric start charging stations. RFR 80 and RES 1, no. Prohibitive. And that's... That's where I got my guidance from, so maybe I'm in a... I'm wrong, but... I think what they mean by... And perhaps it's unclear, so I'm glad you've clarified it. But I believe what they mean are charging stations that are available to the public, so those would not be available in the residential zone. For residential... Personal residential use, I don't believe it needs to be in the zoning code. It would be like plugging in a hot tub or any other kind of accessory to your residential use. But to the extent that there's any... Any confusion, and this needs clarity, you could certainly include your statement that you've already made previously that you would... That the district use table, if it needs to be clarified, should be clarified to allow personal residential use of a personal charging station. Or we could say that we... Well, I personally object to category use 559. Oh, you object to them being allowed anywhere? No, I'm... I'm a... I promote. I do not object to the installation on neighborhood businesses, commercial manufacturing. I promote them. I would want a P under RFR 80 and RES 1.
Can I join in here? I think...
Sorry, this is Talia. John, can you please state your name for the record?
Of course, my name is John.
We're all getting... We're all getting used to doing that. Thank you.
Sure. This is John Penny Packer. I think... So, I... In principle, I agree with the spirit of this, but I'm thrown by the... I think the same issues that Carolyn has thrown by, in that I don't believe these are clearly defined. So, I think that, you know, gasoline diesel, I'm wondering if fuel is a better way of putting it. I don't know if that overlaps with electric or not. And I think that electric charging stations is vague. I think what... I'm only guessing. I think the intention here was, you know, like Cumberland Farms with electrical outlets. What I would rather see is the permission for town businesses and even homes to install charging units. So, there could be a charging station in the parking lot of a restaurant, in the parking lot... The park and ride, or other places. I'm very much in favor of that small-scale individual units in individual businesses that... And that could be residential. But I don't like the idea of setting up a 10-stall charging station in an RFR 80 zone because of, you know, a misunderstanding in the language. So, I'm for the spirit, but I don't like the way it's written.
Thank you, John. Now, if I could throw my two cents worth back in here. The way that I interpreted this was to prohibit it from the RFR 80 zone. That would be a standalone charging station, not a home charging station. But that's, like I said before, that's just my opinion. If somebody's got one in their home, good for them. I mean, they have to charge these things somewhere. They have very limited use, and if they can't get back and forth to work, they don't have viable means of transportation. Anyway, other board members, any thoughts?
This is Emily. I... I'm glad that you all brought this up and read it in this fashion, because I hadn't even considered the idea about, you know, the prohibition of charging stations for personal use. And I agree that the way to solve this is to modify the language and be very specific about what is meant by 559 electric charging stations, with the intended use of that actual use. Another thing I had a question about is the footnote to the district use table that talks about non-conforming development. It says, "The addition, enlargement, expansion, replacement, or intensification of a non-conforming development shall be allowed by special use permit." And there is inserted text in red italics, "Unless prohibited in the district use table." I looked at the zoning map, and one of the two gas stations in town is actually in an RFR 80 zone, the Spicer on Main Street. And so, it's my interpretation of this footnote that because it's in a non-conforming area, it's a non-conforming development in an RFR 80 zone, they sought to replace any of the equipment related to being a gasoline or diesel service station, that they would be prohibited from doing so because it is... If this district use table were approved, it would be a non-conforming, or it would be prohibited in that RFR 80 zone. So, I just wanted to, you know, first check with you all, and Maggie especially, if my interpretation of that is correct. Check that zone designation of that gas station. I was just using the, you know, GIS stuff from the town, and ask if... If that would cause an issue. And so, my concern here is this. We're transitioning from a fossil fuel economy to a renewable economy. We want to be able to encourage people to use electric charging stations and have electric cars and all that. But in the meantime, you know, hundreds of people this week were on gas generators because we had power outages. So, you need... This is a critical piece of infrastructure in town if we have two gas stations. So, we can't, you know, if there's something in disrepair that needs to be replaced, we can't be prohibiting it in our district use table because it's, you know, kind of a critical infrastructure issue, a survival issue, really. So, that's what I want to raise.
This is Maggie Hogan. And so, the language as written would indeed have that effect, because this red language, unless prohibited in the district use table, is new language. And so, there is an intention here to not allow non-conforming development to do anything. No expansion, no intensification. That normally is, as you can see in the black, is allowed by special use permit heard by the zoning board of review. So, this is... That is a substantial change, and it's also not affecting just this. That is a general change against all non-conforming development. And I'm not entirely sure that you have enough information before you to... To think that that's necessarily a good idea. There's no one here to present the proposal, I don't think, or to speak on it, and what is the basis for it, et cetera. So, that's a pretty... That is a pretty tough addition to a zoning ordinance. We'll put it that way.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yeah, Keith there. You know, it says electric charging stations, but do we need to specify passenger vehicles or what type of vehicles? You know, we wouldn't want somebody, you know, buses are electric. We want somebody charging a bus in a residential neighborhood. I don't know if we need to clarify what electric charging stations mean and what type of vehicles. Yeah, again, a lot of things are kind of vague here.
This is Maggie Hogan. I can add something to that. So, the state of Rhode Island, in the last rate case for National Grid, approved several programs for DC fast charging. And they also improved and approved and encouraged fleet conversion from fossil fuel to electric for trucks and fleets. They're encouraging municipalities in the state to convert their fleets. So, I believe it is the state's intention that they would want electric charging stations to be available to all types of vehicles that need to get an electric charge.
Sure, I guess I'm just... We're all interpreting this, or are we trying to limit where those type of vehicles are going to be charged?
Well, the proposed ordinance does in fact do that, and that's why I think there's some confusion. I don't think... I think that... I think the concept of electric charging station is a commercial electric charging station, one that either A, charges for that charge, or B is a... Is one that's come in through the rate case and is not charging on a temporary basis, anyway, as a pilot program. I believe the proposed N in the electric charging station line item for the residential areas is because they don't want these char... A commercial charging station in those zones. And now that we've had the question raised about, well, what about residential use, personal residential use? I do believe there's a difference, and I don't think that this had... The document has been clear in that.
Right, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Now, if I may, kind of a... In a nutshell thing. My opinion is this is a little bit vague. It needs to be ironed out, needs to be nuked out a little bit. We need to figure out exactly what we're saying and why we're saying it. You know, one thing is, our police force and our town garage cross the street from each other. What's the zoning there? If we change to all-electric, and the guys can't plug their equipment in at night, there's a problem. So, we definitely need some clarification here. I agree with Attorney Hogan. This is something that needs to be discussed at length and kind of figured out where we're going with this. On the surface, it sounds like a great idea, but is it going to do harm in a lot of cases instead of good? But there again, that's just my opinion. Moving along. I would ask our town planner or Attorney Hogan where we should proceed with this at this point. Should we call for a workshop? Should we continue with this discussion, or what's the general consensus?
So, it's Maggie Hogan. So, I think we could sort of do it line item by line item and see how far we get, and then if we need to go further, we can do that. So, for instance, use code 554 gasoline diesel service stations. The proposed change is to not permit it in commercial manufacturing and overlay. So, basically, not... No new gas stations or diesel stations anywhere in the town. So, if you have a consensus on that, you could take a vote on that particular component of it, and then we could move down to the next item.
Okay, thank you. Now, the paperwork that I was provided doesn't have that page in it. I have the memo from Jim, and it goes right into the use table.
That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the use table.
This is Talia Gillette, Senior Planning Clerk. There was only one page associated with this agenda item, which is what you have.
Okay. I'm finding it in my mind difficult to follow line items when I don't have those in front of me.
Ron, I'm sorry. Perhaps I described it incorrectly. Are you looking at the use table?
I am.
Okay, so that's what I'm talking about. So, the line... The line in the use table, that's 554 gasoline diesel service stations in red.
Okay.
See that?
I've got it, yeah.
Okay, so look up above. You'll see in the three categories that have a red N. Look above them in that other line. That's the existing zoning code, permitted, special, and A. I don't know what A is. Oh, that's your aquifer thing. So, those are the changes, those three red Ns. So, the gasoline diesel service stations would no longer... New ones would no longer be permitted in the town of Hoptown.
Okay, that's... Yes, the second line. Gotcha. And then the third one is the electric charging stations with two Ns.
So, but just focus for the moment on that 554 gasoline diesel service stations, the line in the middle with the three red ends. Not hens, but ends. And see if you have a consensus with your group. Is there anyone opposed to that change? I guess is the way to ask it.
I'm John Penny Packer. I'm opposed after hearing Emily's point.
I'm John Penney Packer. I'm opposed after hearing Emily's point of view. This is, it is still critical infrastructure. I would, I'd be in favor of special use permit, but I don't think we're at a time where we can just outright ban fueling stations in the town.
Okay, John, thank you. I would agree. We're many, many years away from being electric car capable even. I mean, there's just just a long, long road to all on this. So I would agree with John on that.
Okay, so I just want, this is Maggie Hogan. Sorry. Maggie Hogan, I just wanted to clarify for you that the, there's two components to that. One is the creation of new stations, which is the 554 use code, the one in the middle. And then further down, the one that's the existing stations. So if you're opposed, if if you're opposed to any, if you agree with not allowing any new gasoline diesel service stations, then you could, then you could vote for the changes on that middle row. But if you if you don't agree with that, you think that additional gasoline stations should be allowed to come into town, then you would vote no on that.
Okay.
This is Carolyn. Can I chime in?
Sure thing.
I, I attended the town council meeting where there was some discussion over this. And I believe it was Sylvia's intention to recognize diesel service stations. So she's requesting we add diesel to that use category. And then we see the changes to commercial manufacturing and the overlay secondary. So I think that is the one that we should be focusing on. And it's, the diesel is in addition, it is an amendment. So when we consider that category, we're recognizing just service gasoline and and diesel for for commercial businesses or or people who own diesel run vehicles, et cetera. And I am in favor of allowing them maybe special use permit, but not prohibiting them. And thank you, Emily, for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. I would agree with Carolyn that they should be considered. Technology wise, we're much closer to a hybrid, a diesel electric like the trains than we are to something that's all electric. You know, the the ends in the diesel part of it, that's, maybe we're overstepping there just a little bit. And people have to service their modes of transportation and get where they have to go. That's just the fact of life. It seems to me that by putting these ends here, we'd be prohibiting the two gas stations from selling diesel fuel. I think this one here in Ashaway, Spicer's, I think they sell diesel fuel, but I'm not 100% sure. I'm not a diesel fuel user, so I don't pay attention to those things. But any other comments?
So yeah, Ron, Maggie Hogan, again, I need I need to jump in just to be clear about this. The 554 gasoline diesel service stations, Carolyn has rightly pointed out that the addition of diesel to that use code is one of the changes. The other changes are the P to an N, the S to an N, the A to an N. That would, that, if you voted for that particular change, that one row, that would not prohibit existing stations from selling diesel fuel or gasoline. It only would prohibit anyone from creating a new station for those purposes. Okay? So we're trying to try to deal with like one subject at a time, and I think we can get through it. So what what I'm hearing you say now is that people are are against the idea of prohibiting new gas stations. Is that correct?
No, no, that's not my intent. I'm in a mode where I should probably apologize if that's the idea that I put across. I can agree that the town, most of the people in the town don't want to see any new gas stations. I mean, that's their right. The small town, we've got two, that's probably going to be enough. It's the the limiting of what we already have.
Okay, so let's take them one by one then, because this middle row is dealing with the addition of of a new station. Okay? This would prohibit any new gasoline or diesel service stations from coming into Hopkinton. That's what this middle row would do.
Okay, understood. No new stations. Any other comments?
Is there a consensus on that? Is that what what people are looking to have happen or no? John, I'm not quite clear on yours.
Sure, this is John. I'll clarify. I, I don't think I'm prepared to say we cannot have any new gas stations. I, I don't, obviously, I don't want them near the aquifers. I want them cited appropriately, but you know, and that's why I'm thinking maybe special use permit is the way to go to make sure that there's, there are some barriers and some controls in place. I have no objection to changing the name from gasoline service station to gasoline diesel service station. I didn't realize that that was an important distinction, but that's, sure, that's fine. Does that add clarity?
It does. So currently, the, in the commercial zone currently, these stations are permitted. And in the manufacturing zone currently, it's by special use permit. So the question is, do you wish to keep those designations?
Well, I'm, John, again, if, I mean, if I were just going to pick and choose, I would, I'd make them all, I would, I would change commercial to S and leave manufacturing alone.
So only allow them in the commercial district by special use permit?
If
New ones.
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm just making magic happen, sure.
Well, yeah, sure. That's, that's part of the discussion, right? So John says he thinks it should be special use permit only in the commercial zone, not allowed in the manufacturing zone. And then the N, currently, it's an A in the overlay secondary. Jim, could you clarify? I'm sorry, what's an A?
Yeah, Jim, Jim Lampia, Town Planner. Maggie, I thought I just heard you say that John wanted it not to be allowed in manufacturing. I thought he said he wanted to leave manufacturing alone with the S in there. So I think, I think John wants an S in both commercial and manufacturing.
Okay.
Is that correct?
This is John. Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. So now to address your question, Maggie, the the A that's currently there, that means that an aquifer protection permit is necessary in the secondary zone. The N, which is there in the primary zone, means that despite there being S's in commercial and manufacturing, the fact that an N, it means it's not allowed in the primary zone, period. Okay, so, so, so coming, coming down here to where we are now with the new amended row. Okay, if we're going to have an S and an S in commercial and manufacturing, the question is, I would say you'd want, I would say you'd want an A where the red N is right now. Because if that stands, then what that means is it's not allowed in anywhere in town.
This is Emily. The reason for that is the entire town is within either a primary or secondary aquifer protection area. So if there's N's in those two columns, that essentially means the use is prohibited, right?
I think that's what I said, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
That is correct. So so if there's two N's there, I don't care what precedes it, they're not allowed in town. You could, you can put, you can put S's across the board, but if there's two N's on the far right, it's not, it's not allowed. So it's not consistent. You have to be, if you're going to allow it anywhere in town, you'd have to, you'd have to either put a, put a P or an A in the primary and secondary. A P means you don't need an aquifer protection permit. Right? For example, in the electric, electric charging stations row, they get two Ps there. You don't need an aquifer protection permit for electric charging stations. That's what's being proposed. So I would think, again, I would think if you want S's there, John, then you would probably want, you probably want an A in the secondary zone.
John here, yes, given that, yes, now, knowing now that the entire town is in the secondary, then that would necessarily have to be an A if, if, you know, in order to allow the potential of a new station.
Okay, so that's where we stand right now. So we're looking at, going to the middle row, we're looking at N, 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 the question mark for an S, the question mark for an S on commercial and manufacturing, and A and A. Is that what you're thinking, John?
No, John, again, I'm thinking the last two would be NA. So completely prohibited on the primary aquifer areas. And then with a special aquifer permit, aquifer protection permit anywhere else.
In the secondary, is that what you're saying? A permit in the secondary?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be an S. All right. Now, it just seems to me that it would probably be a good idea for any of these, if they want to add any kind of a liquid fuel, any kind of a hazardous liquid, whether it's fuel or whatever it might be, that an aquifer protection permit would be prudent to be included in their paperwork, no matter what. Whether they're using it for fuel or they're using chemicals to make hockey pucks, whatever they're doing, they should have that protection permit so that they're under some sort of a regulation from the DEM or another form of the of the state or federal government. Any thoughts on that?
Jim Lampia, Town Planner, just for clarity, Ron, the the N, the N in the primary aquifer zone means that it's not allowed, period. So if you have a parcel in the primary zone, it's not allowed. Even if you have a commercial property that that you're going to try and use a special use permit for, you can't use a special permit if your parcel is in a primary zone. So now if you change that N to an A, that would open up the primary zone to special use permits.
This is Paula. Just a point. You can't put an A in any section beyond the primary or the secondary, correct? That's the purpose of those last two lines, well, the last two columns. So you would never be putting an A underneath like R1, correct?
Correct. The the A only belongs, the A only belongs in either the the far, the far two right columns.
Yep.
Because it means, it means an aquifer, right, right.
That's what I was, I was trying to expand upon what you had said.
Right.
Does that clarify it a little bit, Ron?
Yes. Yes, it does. So other than the, than that, little bump in the road, what are the thoughts on on these through the other board members? We're looking at pretty much all ends across the board, leaving it like it is. Am I correct in assuming that?
Are we talking about the middle row? Then Maggie Hogan?
Yes, the middle row.
Okay, so what I have so far now after that discussion for the middle row is N, 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 S, S, N, A. John, is that what your understanding was?
This is John, yes. At least that's my, my, my preference, but you know, I'm the newest guy here, so.
Right. So you have a proposal. Is that a motion, John? Sounds like a motion to me.
Sure, I will, how about, how about that? I'll move that the middle row would would benefit from changing to gasoline diesel and that the values in each cell would be N, 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 S, S, N, A.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
This is Emily. I will second that.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. How say you, board members? Ron Prellitz, yes?
Keith Lindelof, yes. Thank you, everybody.
Carolyn, Emily?
Shemshini, yes.
I think Carolyn's having trouble connecting.
I'm hearing a lot of clicking, so I would have to agree with that.
Yeah, I just saw her phone go off on one of them.
Yeah, she went from being unmuted to muting herself, and I've asked her to unmute. So in the meantime, John, would you like to vote on your motion?
Sure, John, yes.
Well, whether she gets back on or not, we have four yeses on that, so I would say the motion passes.
She's back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
You know, this is how I get to entertain you guys, so I'm a yes.
Awesome.
That's the first smile I've had all day. All right, thank you. So it's unanimous. The second line is, it's good.
Ron, I have a, I have a suggestion. It's Maggie Hogan again. I have a suggestion on how to deal with the next line, okay?
Okay.
Just, so let's assume for the moment that what this means is not the charging stations attached to residences, that this means a station where somebody would pull in and be able to charge, okay? Just go with me for that for the moment. And then that's, if that's the case, it's being proposed that it's not allowed in the two residential zones and permitted in all of the other zones. And if you have a consensus on that, we can add some clarity to the residential thing. We, when it goes to the council, you would make it clear that, look, us prohibiting a charging station in the residential zone does not apply, does not mean personal residences. It means an actual station.
Okay.
You want to treat it that way, you might be able to get consensus rather quickly based upon the conversation this far.
Okay, yeah, that sounds, that sounds great. How say you, board members?
This is Taliyah. Debbie would like to weigh in from Conservation Commission. Ron.
Sure. Go ahead, Deb.
Thanks. The one thing I see in that final row, electric charging stations is not allow it, because we're having so much trouble with the farm viability ordinance right now and solar right now, I don't want to see that farmers couldn't have a charging station, they have more equipment needs to be charged. Would that be considered as a residential or is, it might have to be a larger unit for them? I'm just, I'm thinking way in the future now. This is, but this is where the rules get me. And I just, I just wonder about that, Maggie.
It's a great question, Debbie. If the farms are located in residential districts, it looks as though on its face it would prohibit it. However, I would have to look at your, your farm ordinance to see what exceptions are allowed. And I wasn't prepared to do that.
This, I'm just looking ahead at this point, Maggie. Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lampia, Town Planner, if I could just interject here, I want to pretty much agree with Solicitor Hogan here. The uses that are being proposed right now are in the district use table under retail services. So basically, when you're talking about gasoline diesel service you're talking about gasoline diesel service stations, or electric charging stations, you're, you're, you're looking at something like a service station. Like, these electric charging stations, if, uh, you know, you're gonna have a commercial one, you, for public use, that's a retail operation, that's what it is. I would think, myself personally, I'm not the zoning official, but if a farm wanted to put a charging station on their farm, that's an accessory to the allowed use of a farm. That's accessory to a farm. If a residence wanted to do it in their garage, if I wanted to put a charging station in my garage and charge my truck up at night, because I don't believe there's anything gonna prohibit me from doing that. This is, the, these things here apply to commercial ventures, for-profit ventures, so. That's the way I read it.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you, Jim. I, I agree with Jim that this does look like commercial stuff after that first discussion we had about the N in the RFA, RFR 80 zone. Does anyone have any disagreement with that, with this being pretty much allowing homes and private, private entities like farms from being exempt from this?
This is John.
Any thoughts, any, good, John?
This is John. I have, I, I guess that I'm completely in favor of putting charging stations in parking lots and driveways and, you know, in farms that are for the use of the, the residents or, you know, occupiers of those properties. Um, so that's all great with me. What I do object to in this line, and, you know, this might require a little bit more thought, I know that from doing solar projects, transformers on the property often use hazardous materials in the transform, in, in, in the equipment. I'm wondering if we want to tighten up a little bit around the primary aquifer, um, given that they're, I don't know enough about the, the materials in these stations, so rather than saying, sure, go nuts, do we want to, is there a way to kind of back off and, and approach that a little bit more cautiously?
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, John, what you might want to do is put an A in either one or both of those columns on the right-hand side. Because, first of all, this would apply to commercial uses, number one, and if we're worried about the batteries, and I don't know enough about them either, John, to be honest with you, but if, if, if we feel as though they pose some sort of a hazard to the aquifer, then have, um, someone get an aquifer protection permit.
Okay, what's the thoughts of the other board members on this?
This is Emily. I agree with that.
Thank you, Emily. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, Keith here.
This is Carolyn.
All right, go ahead, Carolyn.
Go ahead, Keith.
All right.
Don't you go, Keith.
All right. It, it, it almost seems that we should put the charging stations in a, a separate category altogether. We're talking about gasoline and diesel, and then we're, then we're kind of taking a turn, and then we're talking about electric charging stations, which could go anywhere. It's almost like there should be an ordinance against gasoline and diesel, and then we should address the charging stations separately. I don't want to waste more time on anything, but I, I think that's kind of muddy in the waters for me.
So, uh, Keith, this is Maggie Hogan. Um, this is an amendment to the, to the use, the table of uses, and, um, the-
These aren't existing.
It is, it is separate. This is a separate use code, electric charging stations. They do not exist as a use code currently in Hopkinton. So this particular use code is being added, proposed to be added, under these categories, N, N, PPP, you know, all the way across the board.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, this is Carolyn Hogan.
Sure.
Okay, um, I, I can't tell you with all certainty that these electric charging stations, I believe it would kind of be the equivalent of running lines for, uh, an electric dryer or a gas range. I'm not sure of what the voltage or the plugs look like, but these, to my knowledge, are hard-wired sources that are drawing down on the electricity resource that you bring energy into your home with. So if you're using electric from the grid, you're going to have a plug for your car, just like you have a plug for your dryer, and the energy doesn't require, this isn't going to require transformers or inverters. So I don't think it's a battery chemical issue, uh, that, that's what I know, but I don't have any documentation to assist. I just wanted to assist with the thought process for that. And I am of the opinion, uh, without the clarification that all of us are asking for, for the definition of this electric charging station, if this district use table is a retail, um, table, like Jim said, we need to know that, a, a, and if it's not, I don't, I don't agree with putting N's in the RS, R80, and the RES1. I, I'd like to see Ps across the board over there.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Let me just throw this out there. Sometime when it's daylight, if somebody was to pull into the park and ride at exit one, you'll notice we have charging terminals there. There are no transformers or anything like that, which tells me they're using either 110 or 220. A 480 line is highly restricted. So I'm thinking it's not a 480 line, but it may be. Anyway, back to that. It's, it's just like a plug in a wall. It's just standing by itself. So, that being considered, it's, doesn't seem to pose any kind of a hazardous problem to the, to the environment or anybody around it. It's, like Carolyn said, it's like plugging in your dryer. So that, I hope eases everybody's mind about the, uh, uh, transformers and whatnot. Any other thoughts? No other thoughts? I agree with Carolyn that, that there should be Ps all the way across these electric charging stations.
Ron, keep in mind, you know, I, I believe that, um, this is a retail use, so if you had Ps across the board in residential, that would mean that I could set up a commercial in my yard, a commercial charging station, and maybe put five or six of these things in, and just have people come in and charge them up. Is that, is that what you want to see in a residential district? Your neighbor, your neighbor having cars coming in and out all day, charging their vehicles? Because that, that's what this is. This is like, this is like a gas station, but instead of putting gas in the vehicle, you're putting electric, electricity in there. So, think of it that way.
Okay, so how's this one idea? If we kept the N's in the first two columns, the R1 and RFR 80, and had some sort of, uh, an amendment or disclaimer or whatever, that this doesn't apply to homes or other private use such as farms? How would that work?
Uh, this is Maggie, and that's actually what I had suggested that you think of this line being. So, I, I would, I would say that when you issue your final decision on this proposed ordinance, that your, your advisory opinion to the, uh, town council would, it would be abundantly clear that this, that the board was dealing strictly with retail, commercial uses, and not addressing home slash personal use, um, or farm use of these entities. And at that, you know, I'm sure when Jim transmits this to the town council, there'll be a paragraph that says that.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members. Would anybody like to frame some sort of a, a document that we're gonna send to the town council?
Sure, John, again. I just want to go back and, uh, revisit, how arduous is it to obtain an aquifer protection permit? Only because, you know, when they put those, the, those charging units in, I know they dug a big hole, I know there's a big silver box off to the side, I just don't know what it is, and I, that's why I'm wondering. I, I would, I would feel terrible if I signed off on, sure, you can put this right over our clean water, without knowing what it is.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, um, I would say that you would think of an aquifer protection permit, uh, similar to a, um, special use permit. Uh, first of all, it's issued by the zoning board of review, so it's the same board that you'd go before. And also, keep in mind that, um, the only people that would be required to do this would be commercial operations, the way, the way, you know, this line item, the way it's set up right now.
John, again, so if I wanted to open up a Cumberland Farms with electric charging stations, I would be asked to put in for that permit. So I'd be inviting public traffic onto my property, and some of them will fill up their cars, some may use an accessory business. I, I'm just imagining what people might apply for. Um, they would just go before the zoning board to get a aquifer protection permit, and that would offer the town assurance that they're going to put protections in place to keep any, any liquid from leaking or seeping into the soil. Is that fair?
I guess, John. You, you could put, you could feel comfortable putting two As there if you wanted, A in the primary and A in the secondary. So that if any, any commercial operation, whether it's in the neighborhood business, commercial or manufacturing, if they want to establish that, they have to get an aquifer protection permit. So if that's what you want to do.
So Maggie Hogan here, um, one other item to consider is, um, if this were a new electric charging station, which is, that's what this is proposed, um, an applicant would be before you for development plan review, they would have to get a conditional approval, then they'd have to go to the zoning board for the aquifer permit protection, protection permit, sorry, and then come back to you, um, under your, under your subdivision regulations. So both boards will be having their eyeballs on it.
Now, in my mind, that doesn't seem like that's a bad thing.
No.
You know, the second pair of eyes on, on anything that anybody does is good, because things get overlooked from time to time.
And this is, this is Carolyn. This is new technology. Uh, so there's a lot of unknowns, and I support putting A's in both of those columns.
Emily and Keith, any thoughts?
Emily, I am in agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, me too.
So we're moving right along. It sounds like it's unanimous again.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, Jim Lamphier again, Town Planner, um, I was just wondering, I'd like to throw this out for your thoughts here. I know that Solicitor Hogan mentioned, um, a, a notation saying that this wouldn't apply to residential use or farm use. Might we want to phrase that, um, if it's an accessory use to the principal use of the property? For example, let's say we had, let's say we had an industrial park, I'm thinking of an industrial park, or an office park in town. If they were to put in charging stations for the, for the benefit of their employees that are there, would, would that be considered in the same light? I mean, it's, it's, it's probably not commercial in nature, it's not open to the general public. I just want, maybe get your thoughts on that, just so we can phrase a, an appropriate, um, advisory opinion to the town council.
That's a valid point. That's a good point. So as I'm understanding what you're saying, if Mr. Quinnlan wanted to put electric charging stations at his facility over here on, uh, Wellstown Road, that may fall under private, or it may fall under commercial?
Yeah, well, I was thinking-
Is that correct?
Yeah, Jim Lamphier again. I was, I, I, you know, he's got a lot of equipment down there, so, uh, I would say that if he has it in his building for all of his equipment to charge up, but I have to think a little bit about this some more. Um, I guess if he was gonna offer his employees charging for nothing, without a fee, but you got to be careful. I, as soon as he, as soon as he opens up a, a charging bank of stations, and he's gonna be charging for that, I think that falls into the commercial or manuf, you know, you know, retail category.
I think that would too.
So, um, so that would, it's like, maybe that wouldn't be deemed an accessory use. I'll, I'll defer to Solicitor Hogan on this one. She knows this area pretty well.
Um, Maggie Hogan, um, I, you've drawn an excellent distinction, Jim. If, if an employer put in, uh, a charging station, um, and it was not charged to the M, well, if it was charged or not charged to the employees, and only the employees were using it, it's clearly an accessory use, okay? Whether they charge them or not charge them, it's an accessory use to the primary use of, of the place of employment. If they added a, um, you know, a charging station, and then, uh, and members of the public could come and use it for free, which I'm not sure why they would do that, but there are some incentives out there through National Grid and, and, and the state programs where, where, they are incentivized, employers are incentivized to install these things. So if that were the case, and the public were using it free of charge, I think that's a little gray area, but if the public were coming and using it, and there was a charge, then I think that, that vaults it into a, a, you know, an, a, a, electric charging station under the use code. So, um, you know, for instance, at, at my day job, they, they state installed or created a, uh, a solar canopy, and then down below it, it's of eight or 10 charging stations, and they are available for, uh, use for free to anybody who wants to use them. Um, and I would, if that, if, if that were a zoned thing, I would call that an accessory use.
Now, what are our thoughts on opening this up to general public for, for comment? Or do we just go ahead and, and form our-
Well, you've got one more item to consider. Um, and that is, under the, I think you've reached, I think you've reached consensus. You didn't take a vote on this line item, but I think you reached consensus. If you want to take a vote and be sure, you could do that.
Okay. Yeah, it seemed to be pretty unanimous, but yeah, let's go ahead and have a vote on that. Perlwitz, yes?
This is Talia. You should make a motion before you vote.
Okay, thank you, Talia. Do we have a motion to vote on this last line item? Well, this line item that we're talking about, I should say.
This is Emily. Ron, I'll make a motion that, um, in this district use table, under use category 559, electric charging stations, um, that RFR 80 and RES1 are both prohibited, listed as N and N, that neighborhood business, commercial, and manufacturing are PPP or permitted, and aquifer primary and overlay secondary are amended to read AA, indicating the need for a, a special aquifer permit.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Carolyn.
Second, sorry. I beat ya. All right. Unless you got a comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a comment. Um, can we include in our recommendation to the town council that, uh, for category 559, RFR 80, and RES1, the Ns be specific to resale of the electric?
It has to amend the motion.
Sure. This is Emily. I'll amend the motion to specify that it's our recommendation that the N's under RFR 80 and RES1 are contingent on there being no resale of the electric, uh, at those charging stations.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Uh, Keith, there, second.
This is Ca-
Okay.
Carolyn voting yes.
Sure.
No.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
For the vote. Carolyn's a yes. Carolyn's a yes, Ron is a yes.
Lindler, yeah.
Shumshini, a yes.
John Pennypacker, yes.
Then it's unanimous.
Great. So finally, Mr. Chairman, the, the final thing that you need to vote on then is that language in red under section 8 non-conforming development, the added language of unless prohibited in the district use table.
Okay.
So Ron, this is Emily.
Go ahead, Emily.
Yeah, Ron, I was going to make a motion that we, we recommend that language, and I'll put it in quotes, unless prohibited in the district use table be stricken entirely from this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion or we, do we have a second?
Got Keith there, that's second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Go ahead, Carolyn.
I'm a third, yes.
Okay, so, so that was just for you to vote, you didn't have another comment? I don't want to overstep here. If you had a comment, I'm more than happy to hear it.
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay.
I, I have a limited amount of comments to make during a planning board meeting. I can't use them all on, on one, one thing.
All right, that's good, thank you. Okay, then we'll have a vote. Prowitz, yes?
Carolyn, yes.
Shumshini, a yes.
John Pennypacker, yes.
Okay, again, it's unanimous. Very good.
Ron, this is Talia, there's a member of the public who'd like to comment, would you like to entertain?
Sure. Go ahead, let's see what you got to say.
I'm going to read off the last four digits of the phone number, and when I'm done, I'm going to ask you to please state your name for the record. 0018. And to unmute, press, oh, you got it.
Hello, this is Barbara Catalbo from Ashway in Hopkinton. I was listening to the comments, and, and I think it's, it was an interesting discussion, especially because in the future, certainly in the next 10 years, we'll be addressing the electric cars. But I'm wondering if you're working at cross purposes to your council, who is addressing the PSES ordinance, solar ordinance, and they are specifically discussing ground mounted solar in RFR 80, not R1 zones, specifically to allow people to have charging stations for their personal electric cars. So they're planning on, most of the residences, or at least in RFR 80, having electric charging stations, which I think is probably something that will be certainly coming to fruition in the next 10 years. Some are on aquifer primaries, some are on aquifer secondaries, some are not. But they're all RFR 80. So I, I think you might want to address the future by, you're obviously, I think, going to have to allow the electric cars and for people to have their own charging stations. You can't guarantee they won't sell their electricity or use their electricity for their neighbors or friends and, and make money on it. Because you sell electricity, you don't just give it away free. So I, I think it needs to be addressed further. I, I do think it's the right direction. But indeed, if ground mounted solar is allowed, specifically because people want to change over from fossil fuels, including their car and the charging stations, that should probably be addressed in your ordinance or in this particular part of the use table. So it's just a comment. I think the discussion is interesting. I'm glad you're being careful with farms because you're going to need a lot more of it, and I'm also glad that you're keeping the diesel because we've always been a farming and an industrial community. And there are a lot of businesses here still who use the heavy diesel. And certainly in an emergency, you will want diesel, you won't have electricity. So thank you, I'm glad you're addressing this.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, where do we go from here, Jim?
I would say we go to the next agenda item.
Yay.
I'm up for that. All right.
That was very good.
Next thing on the agenda is master plan, major land development project at Stone Ridge at Hopkinton. AP 11, lot 47A, Palmer Circle. Okay, if we all have the memo in front of us that Jim sent to us, we need to render in a decision on the master plan that was presented December 7th, 2020.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject a second, Jim Lampier, Town Planner. It is my understanding that the, representing this application tonight would be Mr. William Landry, the attorney, and Sergio Surensia. And after speaking with them today, it's my understanding that they want to provide you a brief status report as to the latest developments on this project. What, what is on the website right now, it is my understanding, is going to be reconfigured for the next time they come before the board. So it's going to be, it's my understanding, it's going to be downsized somewhat. They've met with the Conservation Commission at the site, I believe, three times, and they've tried to accommodate the Appalachian Trail Group and, and the Conservation Commission. So I, I would, I would suggest that the board listen to the status report by Mr. Surensia first and, and their attorney.
Okay, understood. Are those gentlemen or ladies in attendance?
Phil, please press star nine and leave your hand up a little bit longer. And to unmute Sergio, you can press, there you go. Sergio, can, I'll just allow Bill Landry to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I believe Attorney Landry is going to start, and then I'm going to kind of fill in with additional detail of what has transpired since the last time we were in front of this board and what we've been doing to coordinate our, our site plan with other entities within the town. So is, I don't know if Bill is on right now?
He is.
I, I think so. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, thank, thank you. Bill Landry, I'm the attorney for RI 95 LLC, the owner of the project. We were going to make a request that this matter be continued to the next meeting or, or whenever the board is able to, to hear it. I understand it's a pretty full agenda next month. But we wanted to give the board a courtesy of letting them, letting you know what we've done since we were last before you on this application. It's, it's been a few months, and I know you've had a lot of projects in between, but this, this is one in which we have not actually made a presentation on our master plan yet. We were asked at the first public informational meeting session, and we agreed and thought it was a good and, and fair idea to not do the usual presentation and have all of the neighbors and, and people interested respond to that, but to take input from the board and from the members of the public and come back with a presentation that responded to the issues of, of most importance that were identified. And there were several at the time. There was a, a study, a peer review of the entire project, and it is a substantial project that was begun by Crossman Engineering. They had not had an opportunity to evaluate the project, and we were asked to, to provide some responses to their report when their report was issued and to have those issues nailed down before we made a comprehensive presentation on the project. Several of you also made specific requests that the project be geared to, to satisfy certain interests. There was a desire for a very robust landscaping plan, one that would address issues such as viewscapes, the view toward I-95, and that would be comprehensive as to the issue of removal of trees, because we know that's been an issue in the past. We were asked to try to meet or to at least explain what we were going to be trying to do to meet a threshold of 40% of our site being dedicated to open space. And I think it's not at all clear that that is a requirement, but it was identified as an aspiration of the board. It does apply to certain types of mixed uses in this commercial zone. We took that request seriously and we, we have been, we believe we have accomplished that objective. We also were asked to conduct a wildlife migration study, which we did. So we provided all the response, we got the report from Crossman, provided all of their responses. There have been hundreds of hours that have gone into this at tens of thousands of dollars of expense in, in all of these areas, commissioned a very strong landscaping firm to carry out those, those aspirations, look, tweak the design of the project. And then over the last two months or so, we have concentrated on another ask that has kind of developed a project within a project. And this was the request that we consider a design that accommodates the re-establishment of the Narragansett Trail in this portion of the town, which at one time, as you may know, actually crossed what's now Route 95. And our 250 acres, it appears, is strategically located in a way that could facilitate very substantially the connection of other parts of the Narragansett Trail and the eventual re-establishment of most of that system. We met over the last couple of months with Harvey Buford from the Conservation Commission and several folks from the Appalachian Mountain Club who are in, leading this effort on the AMC's part. It's called the, the Narragansett Trail Restoration Project. They're very enthusiastic about the potential for this site to open up new area, but they have asked us to downsize the project in a way that would create substantial acreage for re-establishment, relocations of portions of the trail. So that required us to really understand, you know, what the priorities were. There were references to stone structures, remnants of dwellings, ceremonial stone formations that were of interest to the AMC, and the possibility that the trail could be re-established in ways that could permit people to view those features and that we could restore those features. Nobody had a real inventory of what those features were or where they were. So we have now three different times over the last several weeks gone out to the site. I went on one of the meetings for about four hours and, and traipses through the, through the snow and got an education. We, we found many of these features, GPSed them with folks from the American, from the Appalachian Mountain Club and with Mr. Buford, GPSed them, put, Mr. Surensia was very, very much involved in that, and began working on an inventory of the key features out there and the ways in which our design could possibly be modified to accommodate what is a very ambitious project, but what has increasingly grown on us as a very interesting project. My client is very much in favor of, of this type of conservation. His son is, is an enthusiast and accompanied everybody on, on these, on these walks. So we have completed the process of inventorying those items, plotting them out on, on, on our plans. And that, this piece of the puzzle is going to change many of our responses to Crossman. It's going to modify the content of the wildlife migration pattern, impact memo, and, and moderate what had been a modest impact to begin with. It will seal for sure, we think, our ability to provide at least 40% open space, and it'll provide more buffering from certain neighboring properties as well. So we got very close to having this whole package together for presentation tonight. We decided we, we weren't going to make it when the Narragansett Trail Restoration Initiative got wrapped into the rest of the project and that we, we were going to miss it by a couple of weeks. It's our preference, and, and I, I think perhaps yours, that we present a project efficiently that answers all, if not most of all of the questions that were asked that night, and it has specific changes that we've made to the project to moderate it, to carry this out. I've got a client here, I, I am, Mr. Surensia and I are the only persons here to provide this update. You know, we have other people on the project team that you haven't met yet that are responsible for other distinct portions of this, but in, in 40 years of doing this, I'm not sure I've ever had a, a client that's been more communicative. They've been in regular contact with the planner, with other town officials, certainly with Mr. Buford, and have established a nice relationship, very deferential, very earnest in their desire to try to have a good project that everybody will be happy with. So I, I know Sergio may add, he's, he's spent a lot more of those hundreds of hours on this over the last several months than, than I have. I may have missed something, but our message to you, we wanted to be that, you know, we're, we're not sitting around doing nothing on this project or losing interest in it, quite, quite the opposite. We think we've developed something that will hopefully be, will be much more satisfactory and, and hit all of the, the buttons that you asked us to hit at the, at the last meeting. I do understand you've got a bottleneck in April, we'll work around that. I was very clear from the beginning of this process, not only with the planner, but with the folks who are in opposition to the project, including their council, that we're not standing on ceremony here with any deadlines for the board to act on this. We've, we've agreed to extend the time for the board to act on the master plan until such time as they, the board feels comfortable, they've had an opportunity to fully review what we've been presenting. So if there are any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, and, and I, I would ask with your permission, Mr. Chair, if, if Mr. Surensia has something he'd like to add that I might have overlooked.
Okay, thank you. I would request that board members hold your questions until Mr. Landry has had, I mean, Mr. Surensia has had his chance to speak, and then we'll try to get through this as efficiently as possible.
Yes, this is Sergio Surensia, I'm the lead engineer on the project. Bill pretty much hit all the high points. We've been working.
This is Talia, are you and, are you and Bill in the same room? I think that there might be an echo. So one of you is.
We are not.
One of you.
I will, I will mute.
All right, great. I just didn't want that feedback. I'm sorry, continue.
Yeah, we're not in the same room, there must be just something with the speaker, but I think that's better. Can you hear her okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Attorney Landry has pretty much hit all the high points. I just wanted to add in that we've been working very collaborative, collaboratively with the AMC and Mr. Buford, done multiple site visits and trudging through the snow, identifying some of the relics on. And trudging through the snow, identifying some of the relics on site. And it's it's been a very collaborative effort thus far and we we intend to continue to do so. I plan on meeting with Mr. Buford to identify some of the more critical areas. And we fully intend to have some sort of endorsement or at least letter of understanding to bring to your board. Prior to the meeting that we have next to present. I've also been corresponding with your peer reviewing engineer. And with the advisement of the town planner to make sure that our application is technically sound. We've responded to some of the comments, but I requested today that he hold off on any further review until we have our revised plan. Which, as Bill had mentioned, has significantly reduced the amount of the array to just what we, you know, we really can't reduce it much anymore. But we think we've in earnest provided now a plan that's going to. Be acceptable to accommodate buffers and also to. Compromise on preserving the Narragansett Trail among some of the other trails on site. As well as some of the other historical relics and maintain some significant buffers. So with that being said, we we do fully intend to present this this new plan. And make sure that we have the appropriate sign offs from some of the other town staff. In conjunction with working with the town planner on on that and making sure that we have all those things for you and have a very complete application. With with the the other, the additional information that you've requested. So with that, I'll I'll defer back to the chair if there's any questions. I do have to get on to another meeting, but Bill is here and I'm going to try to stick around to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. So it it sounds to me that you would like a little bit of time to get, as they say, all your ducks in a row, get all your facts and figures, all your sign offs. All your documentation, a hundred percent, and then proceed with this, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. DiOrio.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions, any comments? I think I've gone deaf.
Carolyn has muted herself.
I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Just for clarification, based on what Mr. Landry and Sergio said. This is not the plan for us to ask questions based on the plans and documentation that we've been provided for tonight's meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure I heard that, Carolyn. Could you re-ask that question?
You're you're telling us that there's another revision. In the pipeline that will be applicable and for all intents and purposes, the information we have for tonight's meeting isn't relevant. Some of it might be relevant, but you're, are you asking us to postpone any board member questions and comments?
If there are comments folks would like to make, I that's certainly up to the chair. We're not trying to discourage anything, but I I do want to let you know that there is a a very different. Plan that you'll you'll see for our next encounter and, you know, you may want to save the questions, but that's that's up to you, how you would like us to to help you tonight beyond what we've presented.
Okay, I I have some, I have some questions that are not relevant to what the plan looks like tonight or next month. And and the first question that I have, I directed to Maggie. It's Article Four of the land development and subdivision regs. And I don't know if you're familiar with it, are you?
Sorry, I was muted. I certainly have a copy of that here this evening. Not, but I can get it, what's the question?
Well, okay, you know, for for everybody listening, this is the dedication of land for public purposes. And Article Four, one point one. Says the planning board may require that major land developments and subdivisions dedicate a portion of the land for open space, conservation. Park and recreational land and or facilities to serve present and future residents of the proposed land development or subdivision. Open space conservation, recreation lands, et cetera. So this definitely applies to the project that we are talking about right now. And. It's it it's my thought process that the planning board, even though this is a by right project, the planning board. Has the ability to direct the project development people. To the open space that we would like them to preserve or dedicate or pay fee in lieu of. And and I was just looking for feedback from the team and from Maggie as to how that applies to what we're doing here tonight. Considering all of the effort that the applicants have put into conserving the Narragansett Trail, et cetera. So something you probably can't answer tonight, but I'm feeling that we we have some allowances in our jurisdiction. That can help support the salvaging of the Narragansett Trail and and the historical cemetery. And perhaps some of the stone walls that go through the property. So that that would be my my first comment. Because I I noticed in the notes that the applicant recognizes that many stone walls are going to be taken down. I I had a general question for the applicant, there's been heavy equipment on the site. It was there for a couple of months, not there over the last couple of weeks. But I I was curious as to what that heavy equipment was actually doing there. Kind of a mystery, could you tell us what what science projects might have been occurring there?
I'm gonna have to defer to to Sergio on that. I know there were a number of test holes that were dug, I'm not sure if that was equipment associated with the. Test holes or not, there had to be some paths that that had to be created to get to certain. Areas that were not easily passable, but I I'm not sure what the equipment was if Mr. Trans is still on, I know he did have.
Looks like it was for digging really big holes.
Bill, I'm on.
Big giant test hole.
Yes, I can, I can address, sorry, Sergio Terenzia for the applicant. Yes, the the equipment that was required to get on to the site and navigate the site was rather large, but it was to excavate soil evaluation test pits. To support drainage design. And it was, it was the request of of the peer reviewing engineer and I I'm not sure if it was this this board as well. That we advance our our plans to a point where we had more more comfortable with our our drainage design. So in advance of that, we did get to the site and it it's a rather rocky site, it's difficult to navigate, there's not easy paths. So it did require some fairly large excavators to to get into the site. And we stuck to existing paths to the best we could, limited the disturbance to the best to the best of our ability. In trying to navigate to the locations on the site to excavate those test pits.
Okay, thanks for filling us in, there are a lot of curious people in the neighborhood. I have another question for the applicant. You're proposing, based on the documents we have, a fifty thousand square foot building for battery storage. Is your desire to have battery storage? In that location dependent on the solar array? If we, if the town said you cannot put a hazardous. Facility in that area, what does that do to your interest in putting the solar project in?
I I think I can, I think I can respond to that. I I thought we had established this at the last hearing, but maybe we didn't, it might have been in some communications in between. But we're not lying on the railroad tracks for battery storage in that in that building. If that's not a desired use, our our intent had been to have some some battery storage associated with solar, that would be a compatible. Use, but our our leaning right now is more toward a general warehouse type support building. That would not involve battery storage. That'll be clarified with greater precision as part of our modified plan. But that's my understanding of the direction that the owner is is taking at this point.
Okay, it's. I'll I'll just bring to those listening and the applicants. In my mind, it wouldn't be desirable to have fifty thousand square feet of batteries located anywhere in the community. And as of October twenty seven, twenty twenty, FEMA. Published an article named Emerging Hazards of Battery Energy Storage. I I suggest that if, you know, battery storage is still on the wish list for the applicants, that you read that. And I encourage everybody listening to read it, but it doesn't sound to me that it's desirable. Basically, because we don't have resources anywhere in Rhode Island that would be able to address the failure. Of one single battery in a facility like that and one single battery ignites a major explosion. So that's where I'm going with that. So, you know, breaking those two apart, it works for me. And as long as the solar project isn't dependent on storing batteries, that that's great. And the other, it might be a petty comment, but we've been talking about two hundred and fifty plus acres of land. That this project is going to be cited on, but when I did my due diligence, according to my own wish list. We're only taxing you guys for two hundred and forty five point six acres. So I'm wondering where the extra acreage is coming from, somebody's wrong here, maybe it's the town or maybe it's you guys. But a little over six acres of error could mean the difference for a resident or in a butter somewhere. So I'd like to know what the actual. Size of the land, the scope of the land is that that we're talking about tonight. And those are the only comments I have for you guys, thank you.
Sergio, do you want to, you want to address that?
Yes, am I addressing the the land area?
Size of the land, I think we've been using that as a good, close, round number, I'm not sure. We were trying to provide survey parameters, but I I think Mr. Terenzia might be better able to clarify.
The the lot had has been surveyed and has a certified boundary class one survey. The land acreage per that survey is two hundred and fifty one point nine six acres. Or if you will, ten million, nine hundred and seventy five thousand, two hundred and twenty six square feet. Give or take, so that would have to be addressed with the the assessor's office, I'm assuming. If they have been being, if my client has been being taxed on less land, that would have to be. Addressed and concurred with, I'm assuming with the tax assessor's office. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other board members?
This is John, I don't have any, oh, sorry. I I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say to the applicant that I'm delighted to hear that you're engaging with the town and the Conservation Commission in an effort to preserve the cultural heritage of the the. The area and I look forward to your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, that being said, it it sounds like the developers and the the engineers have done a great deal of work. They're going above and beyond to accommodate all the different organizations. I think we would be remiss in moving on from here, other than to postpone at their request. Until they have everything set, they have a new plan coming out, we should see that. I mean, we can't ask questions on something that we don't know about. Any thoughts on that, board members? Or Jim or Solace Hogan?
Oh, Jim, Jim Lanfield, Town Planner, Mr. Chairman, I I agree with you, I there's, if they're through with their presentation and their update tonight. I think we should fall back and wait for them to come in with something more concrete, so the board can consider it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. All right, that being said. I would entertain a motion to close this portion of our meeting and move on to the next item.
Ron, Maggie Hogan here. You don't need a motion to to move on to the rest of your agenda, you can just thank the applicants for appearing and move on to your next item.
This is Talia.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and we'll look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you as well.
Wait, excuse me, Ron, this is Talia, there are a couple of members of the public who'd like to comment. And so if the applicant would like to stay on the call to hear them, that is probably a good idea.
Thank you.
Sure, let's let's hear from them, but there again, my thoughts are still in place that. There's really nothing for them to comment about, but if they have something to say, we'll be more than happy to hear it.
All right, so we have, we have about five people, some of them have signed in, this is Talia again, some of them have signed in via computer, some have signed in via phone. The first person will be Elaine Calderon.
Okay. Hi. Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
This is Elaine Calderon, I'm the Hopkinton representative to the Wood Pocketuck Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council. And I noticed when I was reading the supporting documents for this project. That neither the applicant, the town engineer, review, the land use planning consultant, nor the wildlife habitat assessment. Addressed or even mentioned the National Wild and Scenic River Status of the watershed and of Knottschuk Brook. So I let the stewardship council know about that and they wrote, submitted a two page letter to the planning board. Which unfortunately did not arrive in time for this meeting, but hopefully will be in the packet for your your next April meeting. But I would like to just mention a few key points in that letter. And a very brief one sentence background that in March twenty nineteen. The seven major rivers of the Wood Pocketuck watershed and their tributaries were designated as Wild and Scenic Rivers by Congress. Knottschuk Brook, which abuts the proposed Stone Ridge PSES site, is one of those federally designated tributaries. So the stewardship council has concerns about this PSES proposal. The first is destruction of a large amount of forest cover. And the second is protection of the brook. The stewardship plan, which was adopted by the Hopkinton Town Council and supported by Hopkinton's Conservation Commission. Land Trust and Planning Board recommends that a one quarter mile, undisturbed, naturally vegetated buffer. Be maintained around these nationally recognized. be maintained around these nationally recognized rivers and tributaries. So in the letter, uh, we suggest that going forward, if, uh, this plan does go forward, we would like to encourage the planning board to require the applicant to, first of all, minimize disturbance within this one-quarter mile area along the brook. And that includes maintaining as much of the natural vegetation as possible. Second, to minimize any potential impact to the brook through proactive mitigation measures and controls. And third, require frequent monitoring of the brook's water quality prior to, during, and after construction. And as a corollary to that, if the water quality tests indicate a negative trend, the developer should be required to take measures to prevent further degradation. The stewardship council feels that the applicant should be responsible for assessing the potential impacts of its project on the Wild and Scenic River values, and make every effort to avoid or diminish these impacts. The council is always available. We're here to help provide input, support, expertise, and I'm sure we all have the mutual goal of protecting and preserving this national treasure that we have within our town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your input. Talia, could we have the next caller, please?
Yep.
It almost sounds like a game show, doesn't it? We have the next caller. Sign in, please.
Yes. Uh, please state your name for the record, Mr. Squares.
Hi, uh, my name is Peter Squares with the law firm Arcillitites and Rich in Providence. I represent Tom and Sylvia Skulco, uh, who own Platte Eight, Lot Thirty-Eight, and Platte Eleven, Lot Forty-Two, uh, immediately to the south. Um, since the last time this was here, um, I submitted, uh, a written report from our planner who's here tonight, but I won't spend any time on that since it sounds like, um, he's gonna have to have a, a review of the new plan once it comes in. Um, but, um, that he will have comment on that when it comes in. Uh, but also, since the last time I was here, we were here, I submitted a, a memo to the board about the commercial special zoning. Um, because the last time I was here, there was, we brought that up, and it wasn't fully, um, determined by the board at that point by a vote. And, um, your prior solicitor, as you know, gave an opinion that although the vote of the council limited the Brayburn rezoning to a hotel, a golf course, and, uh, other limited uses, which didn't include solar, uh, your prior solicitor had opined that even though it didn't say this, the intent of the council was to include solar. Um, so in light of that, I decided to go back and pull up the old meeting minutes from the, um, the, um, Planning Board when the Brayburn project was heard. Um, and what, what was there, uh, in my mind, made very clear that the intent was not to allow, um, any commercial use, uh, but was only to allow that specific commercial use for the Brayburn project. Um, so, um, I'll just quote from those minutes now briefly, but ultimately, what I would ask is that you have a new solicitor now, um, that would be able to give you a, a fresh set of eyes on your prior solicitor's opinion. Uh, because at the end, ultimately, you are going to have to vote on whether or not this complies with zoning. Um, and if it, if it's the case that it determines that he's not in compliance with zoning, I think it's probably better to let the applicant know upfront, so they don't spend more money revising their plans. With that said, the first quote that I found in the March fourteenth, nineteen ninety, Planning Board meeting, um, Brayburn's attorney, Vincent Nakarado, was presenting to the board, and he's quoted as, the following is quoted in the minutes. Quote, "Mr. Nakarado stated that they are seeking to permit specific uses allowed in a specific ordinance, a particular ordinance. There is no intention of picking up additional permitted commercial uses," end quote. So then on April twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety, um, Brayburn came back to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board gave its recommendation to the council, and in those minutes where the recommendation was going, given, it says, quote, "Please note that the applicant has agreed to revise the application as follows. One, that under application item number sixteen, the permitted commercial uses, one through fifteen, be deleted," end quote. So I think based on that, it was pretty clear that the Planning Board did not want to allow any commercial use. They wanted to narrow it to that specific commercial use, and the applicant, for this particular rezone, the commercial special, revised their application, saying that was all they were seeking. So then you go back to the meeting of the, uh, council on July second, nineteen ninety, and in those minutes, it says that rezone has the following condition, quote, "The maximum number of structures and uses in this zone permitted in connection with this project shall be as proposed. One hotel, one conference center, at a combined total of two hundred rooms, one country club, a hundred and sixty-five units of residential housing, and one eighteen-hole golf course," end quote. So I, to me, it, it's abundantly clear that this commercial special zone does not permit this use. That being said, if the applicant wants to put together a project, and the town thinks it's a good project, he has a, a mechanism to seek to have it used that way, but he should know upfront that he's gonna have to ask the council for a rezone of this land, which the council has complete discretion to either grant or deny. Um, so, again, I know it's being continued tonight. I would just ask that, um, the, the memo that I submitted with those quotes, it could be circulated to the board, and that also, your new solicitor, um, give a second opinion, so to speak, on this issue. Um, because I, one way or the another, um, I think it's likely that it would be appealed. Um, and I, I think it's the, the, the more eyes we can get on this up, issue upfront, the better. Um, so thank you for your time. Um, if there's any questions on me, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Talia, could we have the next, the next, uh, speaker, please?
Yes. Caller, last four digits, eight, two, two, two. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Joe Merle from Old People Road. First thing I want to say is that the, uh, Planning Board did a great job initially with your conversations on the first agenda item. Um, I'm one of those people that drive by that project every day. I live in that area. And I did notice the, uh, excavators, the backhoes, and the traffic there. Uh, one of the concerns I have is that there was a gate that was across that property, and that gate has been laying on the ground for about a month or so now. Um, the initial plans that I had looked at, there was a proposal for, it was either four or five twenty-five-hundred-square-foot buildings, and then commercial buildings. Then that was changed to the fifty-thousand-square-foot, um, building and battery storage. Uh, I have the same concerns that Carolyn Light had mentioned with the battery storage in that area. There's wetlands in that area. There's a pond in that area, which is another concern with the gate being down if any, uh, children get into that area. But, um, I'm glad to see that they are considering the historical, uh, issues with that property. Um, but that's basically what I want to talk about. My main concern is with the battery storage. And I'd like to know at the next meeting, uh, if it's not gonna be battery storage, what is gonna be in that fifty-thousand-square-foot building? Do they plan on renting it out? Could it become a construction, uh, heavy equipment, diesel repair building? Um, there's an awful lot of questions about that building, and that's my, my major concern. And again, thank you for your time. You guys have done a great job.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay, Talia. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Conopask, I apologize if I have pronounced your last name incorrectly. Uh, please state your name for the record after pressing star six.
Thank you. Uh, it's a tough last name, but you've done a great job. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Peter Conopask. I live at Fifty-Freel Farm Way in Hope Valley. I was on the Planning Board from, uh, roughly nineteen eighty through nineteen, uh, ninety-two, ninety-three. I was in the room when Brayburn came into the town. And I want to just make a few points. The Planning Board that I was on in the eighties, we were the first board, one of the first boards in the state to produce a comprehensive plan for the town of Hopkinton. There were many people involved in this. For the first initiative, it was difficult. There were a lot of people in the town that came to the meetings. There were a lot of discussions about commercial zones. Spot zoning was a big issue. Protecting the aquifers were a big issue. Increasing our tax base was a big issue. It took us several years to develop the first comprehensive plan. And I was also fortunate to be part of the first revision of the comprehensive plan. When Brayburn came in, we had already had zoned that whole area. Part of the issue of the zoning of that area was to keep open space. John Chaffey, our late senator, talked about the green pathway coming from ninety-five south to ninety-five north as you entered Rhode Island. And what a great place it looked like in the green pathway going up toward Providence. The second thing was, or primarily, was to eliminate spot zoning. And to make zoning more of a uniform approach to growth and development, controlled growth and development in our town. And another important aspect was to protect the aquifers that this parcel is above, and, and the, and the aquifers are below it. I happen to live about several miles east of this, um, project, and I've had my water tested several times over the forty-five years that I've lived here. And I get back some, the most incredible results of the water quality that we have. So all of these things that I just mentioned were very high points in trying to protect our zoning. I want to make sure that you fully understand the intent of the Town Council and the people of Hopkinton in the early nineties, when Brayburn came in. We made a special exception to commercial, what they call a commercial special, because we did not want any other type of manufacturing or commercial zones. We looked at the tax base. We thought it was a good thing. The Town Council was, thought it was a good thing. It was right off ninety-five. It would have limited impact on the town, but it would provide a, a, probably a very positive tax base, which was a major driver. So when we look at the whole picture, I implore you to understand that the intent of the zoning was for a resort, a golf course, aquifer protection, and retail shops, and very limited in manufacturing or other types of industrial activities in this area. It was basically a one-off. And the, any other, uh, uses of the land were, was, was gonna be prohibited. The Town Council and the town did not want to see that happen. And I'm telling you that because I was there. And it was not a one, one-night meeting. We spent a lot of nights in the Town Council, with the Planning Board, with the zoning, and having public meetings. So I think it's very important that I bring this message to you, because I am saddened by some of the zoning that has taken place in the past few years with the solar craziness that's going on. It's a special interest, spot zoning issue, and I really implore the Planning Board to take a stand on this, because we're basically ripping apart the comprehensive plan for a very few individuals that are gonna profit from it, and not the town. And I also would like to say that when you take a look at how we describe the commercial zone, it's for the community betterment, not for one person. It's right in our zoning. Commercial development is for the betterment of the whole community, not one individual. One other thing I'd like to leave you with, and that's, we had to deal with this probably for, uh, when I was on the board for twelve years. When Brayburn came in, they came in in their Brooks Brothers suits. And I was in management consulting, so I wore a Brooks Brothers suit, so I'm just saying that it's kind of a tongue-in-cheek type of thing. They came in to this little old country place out in Hope Valley, Hopkinton, and they were gonna put on the biggest show in town. And they told us about all the money they were spending to do their development. And at the end of the day, we should not make a decision or be influenced by how much money a prospective applicant is spending. That is their decision. We should not be influenced by the fact that we should bend to them because they're spending a lot of money. We need to take a look at the comprehensive plan and what we want to do in Hopkinton to grow in a controlled environment. So I implore you to think about and read the intent of what the Town Council in Hopkinton meant back in nineteen ninety when they put this commercial special use in. It was not to cut down hundreds of acres of trees and put in solar panels and batteries. So I would please implore you to consider this in your decision. Respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Talia, next speaker, please.
Last four digits, zero, zero, one, eight. Please state your name for the record after pressing star six.
Hello, Talia?
Yep.
Um, hi, it's Barbara Kalbo. Uh, my, um, comment is to Jim Lamphier. Um, I would like to have the, um, attorney or the applicant's, um, phone number, if I could, for Hopkinton Historic. We have a small cemetery on that property, and I am sure, since they've been doing so much work, um, that they probably, um, know where it is and address it. We just want to make sure that it's, you know, guarded and gated and marked, um, and kept safe. So if that's okay with Jim, if I could get that for the attorney or the applicant, just so I could take a look at their plans and see what they're planning to do for the small cemetery that is on that property.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, you will have that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barbara. Talia, do we have anyone else?
Yep, we have one more. Mr. Bibler, please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Eric Bibler on Woodville Road. And I guess I just would like to, um, underscore something that Attorney Squares touched upon. And that is to, um, and, and also Peter Conopask, and that is to implore And that is to, and also Peter Conopask, and that is to implore the planning board to please read very carefully some of the materials that have already been provided. And namely, I think some of the most important materials are the meeting minutes from the planning board in 1990 and the town council in 1990, which describe in very great detail what the thought process was of the planning board and the town council and what they were approving and why. And the other document that I hope that you will contrast that with is a very highly suspect legal opinion from our former town solicitor, which ignores the plain language of the ordinance that was actually approved in 1990, and also ignores all of the meeting minutes that I just referenced, and then embarks on this flight of fancy to say that in his opinion, it was clearly the intent, town council in 1990, not merely to approve a finite list of commercial uses, but in fact, that it was their intent that he divined that they meant to approve all commu, all commercial uses that might be approved in the future. And this was approximately 24 years before Hopkinton ever approved a solar project, you know, before anyone ever dreamed of approving a solar project. So this idea that it was the intent of the council to bless the idea of clear cutting 102 acres of forest to put in this massive solar power plant that no one could have imagined. And then you contrast that with all the care they took to specify not just that the open space requirement was not merely 40% of the parcel, it was 40% after subtracting the wetlands and included in this open, excluded from the open space where the golf tees, the golf greens, and all the fairways, right? So I think, I don't think it takes a genius to understand that the nature of the project that the town council was willing to approve in 1990 was very different. And as Attorney Squares noted, in the minutes, there's a conflict. In the minutes, they actually note officially for the record that the applicant withdrew this list of uses from their plan. And the actual number of uses that the planning board approved anyway was just the structures that pertain directly to the project plan. One other thing, because I'm not sure which is definitive, you know, the ordinance that was recorded in the land evidence, land evidence records doesn't seem to match the meeting minutes of the town council. But if you get a copy of chapter 110, which is the ordinance that was recorded as having been passed by the town council on July 2nd, 1990, that actually does include the 15 uses that were in the commercial zone at that time. The ordinance says that the applicant shall be allowed to do any of these specific uses listed on the attached, you know, list. But what I think you should focus on here, too, is the 15th item on the list of specified uses that might be permitted. Number 15 is, quote, "Such other uses as the zoning board of review may determine to be similar, not more objectionable, and not specifically listed in items 1 through 12 above." So if you want to accept this version of what was actually approved on July 2nd, 1990, if it's not in items 1 through 12 above, and by the way, items 13 and 14 are just parking and signs, the 15th item, the catch-all item, is "Such other uses as the zoning board of review may determine to be similar, not more objectionable, and not specifically listed in items 1 through 12 above." So I cannot imagine how our former town solicitor can issue an opinion for you to rely upon that posits the idea that this ordinance means to foretell that the town council 30 years forward meant for any developer to come along and propose uses that were never heard of, like solar development. At the very least, you know, you've got to submit this to, you know, to this, to this final test. But I would submit, as Mr. Conopask has stated, that, you know, this is clearly so far incompatible with the comprehensive plan that you ought not to consider it. And I would also express my appreciation to Elaine Calderon for calling attention to the tributary of, you know, in the Wild and Scenic River Program. And frankly, my dismay that once again, the Conservation Commission's contribution of trying to preserve the Narragansett Trail is appreciated, but I just don't understand how it is that, you know, the Conservation Commission yet again seems to be involved in a transactional approach to a development project where typically they are happy to get a piece of land in exchange for their blessing for some gigantic industrial project. Here we are again, apparently receiving their blessing. You know, we're going to preserve the Narragansett Trail, but the trade-off is that we're going to have a 100-acre solar project that I think might be the largest in New England. So I just urge you to consider all of those things and especially pay attention to the record. And I would again echo Mr. Squares's request that our planning solicitor and our town solicitor take a very close look at this and see if they agree with this assessment, this legal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Talia, do we have any more speakers that would like to have a moment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along. None.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've included in your packets a number of items, and this is just for informational purposes. The first thing was a proposed House Bill 5392 pending litigation, and it's currently been held for study. And this would be a statute requiring initial and continuing education for both planning and zoning board members. And this training would be in addition to the two hours of flood training that's already required. We'll keep you posted as it works its way through the legislative season. And it's supportive actually of what we've talked about already. And the next agenda item follows nicely right into that. So in an effort to provide some board education for both new and seasoned board members, I spoke with the chair and the planner about, you know, the possibility of having the board be able to attend some training workshops. Of course, COVID changes things significantly for us right now. But Grow Smart, a Rhode Island entity, has in the past conducted trainings regularly for land use board members. And one of the solicitors, the other town solicitors, was kind enough to send me e-mail a copy and, which has been forwarded to all of you. So I would encourage you to peruse that document. There's a lot of topics that are covered and you might find it effective. And if you, if we want to at some point in the future, if we have a little time on an agenda or a workshop, where we can go through some of those items, you know, you might find it helpful. Third thing on the report is I provided you with a copy of a recent case out of Narragansett. It was just decided in February, Boone Street, Presby LLC versus the Town Narragansett Zoning and Planning Board of Review. And that caught my eye for a couple of reasons. One was because they talked about a Hopkinton case from a number of years ago with the Loves Truck Stop and how the statute has changed since that time, where now the board, when it makes its decisions, has to make a finding that the application is consistent, not only with the comprehensive plan, but is consistent with the zoning ordinance. And back in those days, they did it. The other reason that I thought this was an interesting case for us to read, and I apologize if it was too long, but it, and it talked about, the court expressed some reservations about a, the decision that was written by the planning department after the board made its decision and was, the court was critical of the fact that the decision as written was not in compliance with what the board had actually said at the hearing. And the court was clearly concerned about that. So that ties into the things that we've been talking about a few months ago about making findings of fact and conclusions of law and trying to work with the worksheets that I've provided to you so that you can, when we get to the point of having to make a motion, you've kind of put all the pieces together and, you know, you're not, A, relying on administrative staff to do it after a meeting is over or anything of that nature. So I thought it was an interesting case. Did anybody have any questions about it? All right. Other two items, Revity Energy LLC appeal to the zoning board was in fact canceled, even though it was scheduled to go forward because of the winter weather we had a week or two ago. And that will be, it's continued to March 18th. As you know, I have filed a memorandum and then a reply memorandum to the, to the applicants. So all of that is on file with you folks. Happy to answer any questions if you have anything there. And then finally, I did issue a memorandum dated January 29th concerning the question of the applicant's name for the Skunk Hill Solar Application. And I believe they've been in contact with the planner's office. And that, that matter is currently not, not complete. And I believe one of the items was the documentation, pardon me, in compliance with the requirement that the applicant be the intended owner of the PSS. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Planner's report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Correspondence and updates.
None.
Perfect. Date of our next regular meeting is April 7th, 2021.
Ron, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped over.
Do you want to have the public forum?
Yes, I was just saying that I overlooked that. I apologize for that. Public forum. Do we have anyone?
We don't have any raised hands, Ron, but always good to ask.
Okay, thank you. Date of our next regular meeting is April 7th, 2021. Oh my God, what was that?
Me.
Trying to let my phone go. All right. I'll have to take a motion for adjournment.
Keith here, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Keith. We have a second.
Carolyn, I'll second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. Prellwitz, yes.
Lindelof, yeah.
Light, yes.
Tom Shinia, yes.
John Pennypacker, yes.
Okay, thank you to everyone in the audience and to our board members and our solicitor and our planner and Talia. We'll see you in April. Thank you.